Yes.
Here.
I can't hear very well right now, guys. I'm gonna play with my headphones for a second, but I'm here. You're Lily.
Here.
Here.
Oh. And Amy Donahue.
Here.
Okay. So, looking for a motion to go into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and to discuss strategies with respect to like the bargaining. If no committee may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. So moved. Their second.
Second.
Roll call.
John Ford.
Yes.
David Stokes.
Yes.
Lily Reed.
Yes.
Heather Foley.
Yes.
Cesaris.
Yes.
Yes.
Amy Donahue. So we're coming back to the, the school committee meeting. I apologize for running a little late. We had an executive session prior to the public session and we had to do some changes with the Zoom in order to have that executive session. So we had to go over a difference. So now we're back on the agenda and we're to item number number four, which is the teaching and learning showcase. And we're going to start with superintendent providing an update on the school reopening plans.
Excellent. Thank you, Douglas. So today we are just actually going to write just a pretty brief overview of what the next five weeks are going to look like here in the Watertown Public Schools. I would also mention that on the Zoom this evening, we have most of our principals, if not all. I didn't get a good shot at looking to see who was there along with Dr. McGinnis and Kathy Damaris, the Director of Student Services. So along the way, they will be adding as needed, but certainly I just kind of wanted to highlight once again, the first, the next five weeks. So week one, which is where, where we're at right now. So, so one of the big things for week one is the, tonight, the enrollment form for the Watertown Virtual School is due. So any families that are still considering whether they want to be part of the Watertown Virtual School, which if, just as a reminder, that's the fully remote until at least February 8th. It's the longer term option for families who just want to stay remote and not be in the bridge to hybrid. So if anybody's interested in the Watertown Virtual School, they should fill out that form by 11:59 this evening because we will actually begin starting the work of creating the classes once we have that done. This week also, I would mention that our leadership team, the curriculum coordinators, the assistant principals and the principals and the district leadership will be meeting for a leadership retreat. I always mention the fact that it's really should not be called a retreat. It is truly a lot of hard work about really getting ready for opening up schools. So we're finishing that up. We actually had two days last week as well. We're doing the leadership retreat this year in the Commander's Mansion tent. Makes it even sound more fancy, but it is outside and we are all underneath the tents. And it's, it's been great to be together to really get ready, getting ready for the beginning of the year. The other thing later on this week, I didn't want to get too many forms confused, but we will send out another, not, I wouldn't call it a survey, just a brief form asking families, you know, who are in the bridge to hybrid, if they have preferences around, if they have twins, if they have siblings, if they want to be on the same cohort, if they want to be on opposite cohorts. If you have twins, you want to be in the same class. Normally we don't have twins in the same class, but there's a lot of intricate ways to try to set up our classes and we want to make sure that we, we give parents a voice about how they would like to see the cohorts formed for their families. Additionally, we will, especially at the elementary level, if there's a reason for childcare that you want us to look at different cohorts for families, that is something that we will ask as well. So that, that survey should be coming out probably around Wednesday, but I don't want to get it confused with the enrollment for the Watertown Virtual School. So our principals will continue to create class lists, especially at the elementary level once all of the surveys are in. You know, we know, you know, at this point in time, we don't know how many people are going to be in the Watertown Virtual School, but enrollment is looking pretty, pretty robust. So that is certainly something that we're going to figure out in terms of how best to assign staff, et cetera, to the students who are going to be in that virtual format. The other thing that's going to begin this week is the HVAC assessment. As you know, we have hired an outside consultant to come in and really evaluate every room in our buildings in terms of air exchange and air quality. You know, we are blessed and fortunate to have the Department of Public Buildings and we have an in, I've said this before, we have an in-house HVAC technician, which is very rare in a school system to have somebody that's here every day. So even with the assessment, you know, we'll be able to quickly look at the recommendations and see what we can do, but along the way, we have somebody here all the time to address any issues that might arise. So that begins this week. It actually wraps up in week two. They'll be back on Monday, but finishing up their evaluation, their assessments. And then the Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee will meet shortly after to review what it is that they have to recommend. In week two, beginning on Monday, I can't believe it's right here, is new teacher orientation on August 31st. We are still in the process of hiring. You know, we don't have the, the same large crowd that we normally would, but I, I know that we have at least, you know, 10, if not 12 teachers that will be starting in our new teacher orientation. That's Monday. And then we begin our opening days, our opening days, September 1st and 3rd. You know, we'll certainly lead off with a lot of training around, you know, life and teaching in a pandemic. We have a keynote speaker that's really about mindfulness and staff health and staff wellbeing. We'll be looking at room setups within our buildings just to make sure that we don't have supportless furniture for when it is that we move into hybrid. But certainly the focus is coming back together virtually and maybe a little bit in person in terms of, you know, getting the year off right and acknowledging that we've all been through a lot in these last six months and we have to take care of ourselves and we have to take care of each other. So that's kind of the theme of those, those first couple of days. And Dr. McGinnis is going to follow up a little bit later about that. One thing I wanted to mention is student registrations will open up. So, you know, all that paperwork that you used to do in the past, we started last year with a fully online system. So we will open up that online registration again. It allows you to verify your contact information, fill out all your forms. And so that we're ready to start on September 22nd. Weeks three and four. So Dr. McGinnis, you want to talk a little about the opening 13 days for staff?
I would be happy to. So we have steadfastly and thoughtfully planned, constructed and reconstructed each time that the Commissioner of Education dropped some new edicts on our proverbial plates. A safe and welcoming cadre of days here for human connection, mutual support during our 13 days as we get prepared to welcome our students. We are also scheduling time. Teachers need a lot of time. Our staff members need time to set up, to procure their materials for at-home, for working hybrid, all of the variations that we have, and time to process the information that will be learned in the ed tech sessions, et cetera, that we have, and time to plan together and collaborate. So the framework that we're using is in front of you on the slide. And Dr. Golston mentioned a little bit this, about this, but the first week is, you know, staff wellbeing and wellness and how are we going to keep each other safe physically and emotionally in the building and at home and connecting. So we're calling that first week, keeping each other well. And it's all about human connection, safety and equity. The second week is all about teaching and learning. So curriculum, learning together is what we're calling it. So the what of what we're teaching at each grade level and each course of the high school and changing the, you know, modifying the scope and sequence as needed to prioritize a lot of our learning targets. The how we're teaching it with a lot of ed tech sessions, some from consultants that we're working with and others from experts in the field. And those are, experts are our own staff members who are, have spent a lot of time on their own, learning a lot of material that they're going to share in different ed tech sessions as well. And then also, the third part of that is how can we support and lift each other up during this work? It's hard work. We know it. And it's, it's increasingly hard because we have to meet students that a lot of us don't know because they haven't been in school in our classes this year. So we need to be able to support each other in this work. And finally, the last three days, the 17th, 18th and 21st of September. That's our student, staff and family connection time. So we'll have various meet and greets, a little different at each level, but that's so that we can welcome our students ahead of time and make them feel comfortable and provide our parents a lot of information along the way. We'll have the distribution of our technology in our one-to-one district, which we're so fortunate for. And we'll have student supplies that are sent home, especially at the elementary grades. Middle and high school would be more books, things like that. So that's all occurring in the final three days of the 13 days.
Thank you, Dr. McGinnis. And then week five, stepping foot on the bridge safely. That is the key. So remember, we are in a bridge to our hybrid. So September 22nd, our schools will reopen for instruction remotely for all except our highest needs students. Our weekly learning plans will be sent out to students and families. Our class community building will take place and we'll be a deep dive into the learning platforms for our students and our families. That is our week that we are ready to kick it off and start school in this amazing 2021 year in ways that I know that people are going to be proud in terms of what we're going to be able to offer our families, our students and our staff moving forward. So we're starting to get excited. It's been a, a lot of work to get here, but it is getting exciting to think about reopening school and knowing that we're going to do an amazing job for our families. So we have some more ongoing communication and engagement opportunities. Our principals continue to hold forums, chats, coffees, et cetera. I myself will be holding three more formal forums. There's one tomorrow evening, sorry, tomorrow afternoon, tomorrow afternoon. Don't let me start at 6:00 PM by accident. 3:00 PM and then September 1st at 6:00 PM and then September 8th at 6:00 PM. Those are all inside of a link that is in the last newsletters and every newsletter is sent out called Community and Engagement Opportunities. And we'll ensure that those links are on the front page of the website as well for anyone who would like to come to the forums. They've been very helpful for us to hear the feedback from the families and the parents. It helps us to shape our direction and trust me, I don't know if you've noticed, but we do make adjustments and make changes based upon the feedback that we hear along the way. So don't, don't feel that it's not worth coming because it is. Not only will you learn a lot about our district, but we learn a lot from you. So highly encourage that from our families. And then, you know, that's where we're at right now. If you would like, I mean, we're here to answer questions. We have again, the principals, the, you know, the leadership team. Anybody has any questions, we're here to, to answer them.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Golston. So let me start first. We do have on the agenda an opportunity for some public comments and questions on what was just said. We also do have public forum after that. If they, people who have comments they want to make about other school-related issues, they can do that. Let me start first off with the school committee. If they have any particular questions on what Dr. Golston and Dr. McGinnis just presented. Yeah, Lindsay.
I had a couple of questions that were, they're both kind of related. So it's really about, so like after tonight, parents are sort of committing to how their kids are going to, during this bridge to hybrid, the virtual school or et cetera. At what point are parents like, I'm kind of wondering, what sort of information package should they expect about like, this is your kid's class, here's who's in the class, so you can communicate with those parents. Here's their schedule. Here's, there seems like, are they going to get like one package? When about what should they expect? Like I know all that's not worked out yet, but I kind of feel like people feel better when they have a sense of when that startup stuff will land in their way.
So I will, in my next update, I will send out information about that because I don't think that we have settled exactly on the timeline for that. I think right now what we've been waiting most for is getting the surveys done so that we can start building our classes. We, you know, ideally we'll get that, that accomplished as soon as possible because our systems depend on that. So like Google Classroom and T-Saw and all the, the tools that we're using need to have our class lists. So not only is it important for the families to know where they're going, it's also important for our teachers. I do think that it would be after the 1st of September for sure because we do want to get our staff in to have a chance to help work with that. Under normal circumstances, you all know that we did step-up days and you knew where your classes were back in the spring, but given all of the complexities, we certainly held off on classroom placements for that very reason. So it'll probably be not until after Labor Day, but soon after Labor Day. Sure. I don't know if any of the principals wanted to add in there, but.
Is that kind of also covered the schedules for the high school kids?
Yes. Yep. Yes. They again, are waiting to build until they know what they're building. But luckily at the high school and at the middle school too, I mean, for the most part, this, the schedule's pretty much the same. I mean, you're going to get the classes that you signed up for. They might not be taught exactly like they used to, but it's not like we're going down from a seven-period day to a, you know, a four-period day where you lose a lot of your electives. So, but yes, that's coming out too.
For those on the school committee that are remote, you might use the electronic, raise your hand because I can't necessarily see you. I can see the four of us in the room here, but not the three of you. So any other school committee questions or comments? Okay. Let me open it up to the public then if they have any questions or comments and just, I would ask you to try to keep your question or comment under two minutes and, you know, recognize who there's a community forum tomorrow and other opportunities. We have a full agenda, but I wanted to give people an opportunity if they do have any particular questions or if there's something in the chat.
So the question in the chat, and maybe Principal Martin might be able to answer this. So the question is, or I can answer it too, but maybe she might want to answer it. Our child is beginning middle school virtually, so we are new to all of this. Yes. The transitions, we definitely will be working with our transitions. Are there any electives that our son needs to elect and how do we do this?
So I guess I would say the main one would be like a performance music band, chorus, orchestra or percussion. If you're coming from an elementary school, we probably already have that information. If you're new to Watertown, you can, you know, we'll send something out or you can email me and let me know if you're interested in one of those things. Other than that, any other enrichments or electives will be sent out to everybody as we figure out how they're fitting into the schedule. So other than that, you're all set. Everybody will get the same specialists, health, art, music and tech ed, one per term along with PE. Oh, also, if you're new to Watertown and you haven't decided a language, we have Spanish, Italian and Arabic. So also maybe reach out to me and we can have a conversation about, or if reading is more your, your speed, reach out to me and we can have a conversation about that.
I don't see any hands up.
Or in the chat.
Superintendent's done such a great job with their team.
I'm suspicious.
Any other, any other questions or comments from the public?
I would say that we've had very robust attendance at the forums. And they've been, the same thing on tomorrow at 3:00. It's more of a meeting. So everybody's together and it's been far more, you know, open conversations. I think we've done a, a lot of answering the questions and have provided more updated FAQs. And thank you very much for some help. But certainly that is, you know, we're trying really hard to communicate. I think somebody, we, there's enough, there's too much information. So you gotta figure out what's the best way to consume it, but certainly we are here if, if you want to join us tomorrow at 3:00. Meaning I'm here at 3:00 for anyone who would like their information.
Have you been able to translate any of these resources for folks?
Yeah. So the, the bridge document is translated into Spanish and Portuguese. And our liaisons have been reaching out to families across the board. We put in last week's forum, if anybody needed a translator, we had two available. But certainly we're working really hard to ensure that people have the information. But this week we're going to do a lot of work with liaisons, doing outreach to make sure people understand what the forum was, you know, I've gotten, I mean, we just don't want to miss anybody. So yes. And the smores are translatable, which is really helpful. Is there a high school forum tomorrow as well?
It's not.
Mr. Jacob Wozniak. Wednesday?
Wednesday evening, 5:00 to 6:00. We'll have myself, both assistant principals. We'll have our Director of Guidance, representation from ELL. So we'll have the, the gang is all there to answer all your questions. And feel free, if you don't feel comfortable reaching out with a question for whatever reason, please email me directly and we'll get it answered, even if you don't ask it.
Okay. Any other questions?
We have one in the Q and A now. Is elementary school and high school both going to have half-days for remote?
So they're, they're actually full days, but they're, they're core academic until 12:15. And high school, I think it's till 1:05. What time are you ending the core academics?
We go till 1:10.
1:10, right. And middle school's at 12:15 as well, but that's just a transition to have lunch. And then you hop back on to do either independent reading or independent science and social studies, applied science and social studies. And at the high school, I believe there's office hours and other various activities. The idea is that our students are actually programmed all day for a full school day, but the core academics pretty much end right around lunchtime and then you move into other various activities that are asynchronous. Or they might be synchronous too. I mean, there might be lunch, lunch bunches or social groups, but certainly it is a, a full day, but the emphasis is in the first half of the day for the core academics. That's a very good question and I should know the answer to that. I think we said that lunches will be picked up at site, but let me, let me put that in my update. That's a great question in terms, the, the question is, will you still have to come to the high school to pick up your lunches or can you pick them up in the schools? I will find out and make sure by the 20 seconds that you have that information, but up until the 20 seconds or up, up to the 21st, lunch again is universal. Anybody who wants breakfast and lunch, it's available at the high school on Tuesdays and Fridays, but we will definitely be providing lunch. It's just a matter of, I'll get that information about where it will be. I thought there was.
We have someone, Janelle has her hand up.
Okay.
I don't have the ability to.
Yep. I got her.
Hi, how are you? I'll just be quick. I know there's been a lot of discussion, but I'm just wondering when we'll make or have a decision on what teachers are doing in terms of going into the building or teach. I've heard that kind of, we don't have good internet yet. So I'm just wondering when we'll know what we're doing in terms of teaching in our buildings.
Hopefully very shortly, like imminently. So certainly the goal will be to have that done by midweek this week.
Thank you.
And I think there was somebody else with their hand down. Anybody else, any other questions? Okay. Just want to thank everybody for participating here. Just point out that as, as the high school principal mentioned that, oh, in addition to the community forums that Dr. Golston mentioned, individual schools are having forums. So at the high school is on Wednesday and there's others that are scheduled. So we want to take advantage of those opportunities as well. Next on the agenda would be actually the public forum. If anyone wants to speak more broadly about any particular issue that they might have related to schools. Anybody, I guess this would also be raising your hand if you had interest in speaking. I don't see anybody. Okay. We'll move on to our action items. We have the, first action item is the school calendar. And so this is a change in the calendar. Obviously we have, the opening has altered the calendar and so it's come back to the school committee for discussion and about the major change is just the, the change in the start date. The rest of it stays more or less the same. Well, it actually went to 100, from 180 to 170. So that changed as well. So, Dr. Golston.
Yeah. So excellent. Again, the, the most important highlight here is that the first day of school for instruction is the 22nd, but you will notice that along the way, we have added the different ends of terms. They have shifted as well because we started a little bit later and the year is 170 days. So we have yet to determine like dates and times for say, conferences or when we're going to distribute report cards, we will get there. But right now, these are the most important dates for families in terms of, you know, holidays and, you know, the last day we're, we're trending to the 18th. We will see how that goes. I, you know, I don't imagine that we will be using all that many snow days.
Can I, how, I have a question.
Yes.
How would you actually say it could be a snow day when we can out-deep from?
Exactly. So I, I, I will reserve the right to say that if we use five snow days, it would be the 25th. But we haven't gotten official word about how we can, what they're going to use. They think, there was a word from the, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that they will obviously take into consideration, you know, using remote time for snow days, but they haven't officially said that that's what they're going to do. So.
Up to now, that was not allowed.
It was. If you could get a waiver, you could apply. You guys were a blizzard in a bag. But then, yes, the, the year that we, we ended up needing it the most is the year they disbanded that. But I don't know, we'll ever have snow days again, quite frankly. So think about it.
So any other, other questions on the revised calendar? Is there a motion to approve?
There's a motion to approve the revised calendar.
Any other discussion? Do we have a roll call?
David Stokes.
Yes.
Lily Reed.
Yes.
Heather Foley.
Yes.
Cesaris.
Yes.
Lindsay Moskowitz.
Yes.
John Ford.
Yes. Amy Donahue?
Yes.
That's approved. Thank you.
So can I just mention there's a, something in the question and answer that I'd like to address? So there, and I, I apologize, Liz. That is something that the anti-bias coalition had brought up, whether we would entertain the thought of changing Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. I, certainly it's something that, that we should discuss, you should discuss as a committee, but I certainly think it reflects a little bit more of what the day is. It's a celebration of the Indigenous Peoples and the, what happened from Columbus coming. So I, I just want to say that I think it's something to discuss and that I would support a move to Indigenous Peoples' Day.
I think that would be something we would refer to subcommittee?
Yes.
Wouldn't it also have to go through the town?
As a matter of fact, there's a request, I got a request a few weeks ago to look at this.
Great.
The town would be looking at this. I'd say before, it would probably be in action. Okay, true.
Great. So it is on the radar to consider a change to Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Okay.
Good. Thank you, Liz.
Next item on the agenda is the Star Academy, which is a, a private school in Watertown, which we, by state law, the school committees, we, we require to give its approval to a private school, the curriculum. And we've already done that, but they wanted to expand. So Dr. Golston.
Yes, thank you. So actually, once again, the very, the, the initial request two years ago to create the Star Academy was the intense, there were, I think, 12 different standards and several different indicators that they had to demonstrate that they could do. I met with them on a very ongoing, regular basis. I inspected the building, you know. It was, it was a full soup to nuts. Do we think that the education they were providing would be commensurate to a public school education? And at that point, they definitely demonstrated that they were there. Last year, you actually voted to add in grade two. And so now they're ready to go three, four and five. So they provided me with all the curriculum for grade three, four and five for all the subject areas. And I would say that it's very well done, thorough. And I recommend that you approve their request to go on to three, four and five.
Your motion to approve, so moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Do we have a roll call?
Lily Reed.
Yes.
Yes.
Cesaris.
Yes.
Lindsay Moskowitz. Yes. John Ford.
Yes.
David Stokes.
Yes.
Amy Donahue?
Yes.
That's approved. Next item on the agenda is the composite evaluation of the superintendent for 2019, 2020. Oh, this is an annual process that we go through in terms of evaluating the superintendent. Every year, the superintendent puts together goals that we review and approve. And actually that will come up in our agenda shortly. And, and that a year ago, she did the same. Dr. Dolson did the same. And then about a month and a half ago or so, month ago, we began the process of evaluating her performance over the last year. She produced a document that provided kind of. She produced a document that provided uh kind of an explanation of her accomplishments with respect to those goals. Individual school committee members filled out an evaluation form, and then they all sent it to me. And then what I did was created a composite evaluation, which is what I'm gonna go through uh this evening. I want to say just um the the format of it, there's kind of three uh stages to it, the evaluation. The first step, it's called step one, is around specific goals that were done for that year. I think there are six of those, seven. There are seven this in this document. So we did an evaluation of those and we rated them around these different ratings. Did not meet some progress, significant progress, met and exceeded. And then the second part of the evaluation is where we look at based on standards that the state has. I'll come to that in a few moments. And then the third part is an overall performance. So again, I'm gonna to read through this. Um, I think what I'm gonna do is is um make it a little bit more abbreviated than perhaps what we've done in the past. On the the seven goals that are on the screen, at least you can see the first one on the screen. Uh, I will just read off what the the ratings were. And actually, you can see those on the screen as well. And then underneath that are a few representative comments from individual school committee members. And I think we'll just, I'll make a couple of brief comments about those rather than read all of those. And when I get to the final part of it, I will read the overall comment. And but I'll read the goal itself so people have an understanding of what the context was. So uh step one, the first goal was fair, effective educator goal setting and evaluation. So with the district leadership team, together, we will develop a common understanding of what instructional excellence looks like and will promote student learning and achievement across classrooms in the Watertown Public Schools. This will be measured by one hundred percent of teachers being observed at least four times in their educator plan cycles. And then at least three times a year, the leadership team will calibrate feedback that is provided to teachers. And under this one, the school committee, the seven members had four that said significant progress and three that said exceeded. And you can see some of the comments that were made there. The number of evaluations, the learning walks, et cetera. One kind of overall comment I would make about this is that it's fairly consistent in all of these that, you know, because of the closure of the school buildings in March, March thirteenth, a number of the goals, the superintendent was not able to complete all the goals, uh, specific measures like the number of evaluation or number of learning walks, et cetera. And so I think you that's reflected kind of throughout this document. Uh, goal number two is effective communication with the larger school community to increase opportunities for students, teachers, families, and community members to provide feedback and to contribute to decision making. And so here we had some progress, one, significant progress, five, and exceeded, one. And people talked about a variety of different things the superintendent has done. Coffees, uh, updates, the smores that she mentioned, surveys. And there've been discussions about trying to uh actually provide even more support for her around communication. But I think as was example with the community forums, uh, there's been some some significant work done in that area. Goal number three is building for the future elementary and high school project. Represent the Watertown Public Schools in the planning process for the building projects and facilitate clear lines of communication regarding the progress of the building projects via various methods available to the school department. And here we have significant progress, one, met, four, and exceeded, two. So probably the highest rating among the the seven annual goals. Uh, and people, a variety of comments about the work that the superintendent has done with the building for the future with the elementary schools. Uh, particularly, I note there about the Conif moving to Waltham, Conif West. That's been a big job for superintendent has been involved with that along with lots of other people in the district. Goal number four, uh, systems and structures that ensure equity. Engage all WPS faculty and staff in embracing anti-bias and inclusive practices that promote equity and ensure all students feel valued and supported in their learning. And so here we have some progress, one, significant progress, six. So a variety of comments made about, you know, supporting the the important values in the community about equity and the school district about equity, the anti-bias coalition and other activities. Goal number five, uh, increase student achievement for all students in Watertown Public Schools to ensure the curriculum is articulated and aligned to standards pre-K to twelve and that teachers are provided with the necessary resources and support to successfully deliver the curriculum. So here we have some progress, two, significant progress, three, met, one. And then one person commented that was really unable to evaluate because of the pandemic and the closure of the schools. So this was a difficult one in the sense that we didn't have MCAS in the spring, which would be one of the metrics that would be used, uh, an important metric that would play into this value, uh, this particular goal. And I think most people mentioned that. Uh, but there was still some uh kind of improvements in a variety of other ways of of looking at academic achievement. Goal number six, uh, tiered systems of support. Develop the appropriate systems and structures to strengthen Watertown's multi-tiered system of support for both academic and social emotional learning so that all students are appropriately challenged and experience continuous growth in order to make meet the DESI accountability targets set for our twenty-five percent lowest performing students. And here, there's some progress, one, significant progress, five, and then met, one. And comments were made there, particularly about the expansion of coaching uh in the district and how that's played an important role. Uh, also, the number of people mentioned the district curriculum, the combination plan that was put together and uh was presented to the school committee. And then we closed right after that. So wasn't able to follow through quite as much as she had hoped. And then finally, goal seven, uh, shared vision for district improvement to implement the second year of action plans for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty-two district improvement strategy, which articulates the district's mission, vision, core values, and strategic objectives. We have some progress, two, significant progress, three, and then met, two. If I go to to uh step two in the evaluation, which is the um assessing performance on standards. And so these, there's four standards. These are the standards that the state has uh for all uh superintendents. Actually, for principals as well, the same standards, or they vary a little bit?
Um, they're pretty much the same standards.
Pretty much, yeah. These are the ones that are used if it's a developed superintendent. So yeah, so here we have, um, you can see on the screen again, um, the instructional leadership, five proficient, two exemplary. Management and operations, five proficient, two exemplary. Family and community engagement, five proficient and two exemplary. And then professional culture, six proficient and one exemplary. It was a very um high marks uh to the superintendent, very strong support. And then finally, the the last is step three, which is where we do an overall performance rate. And here you can see see that two rated proficient and five rated exemplary. So again, very strong marks. And then we have the comments. And so here, I will read these comments. Um, these comments are in the recorded in their entirety. So each school committee, whatever school committee member, whatever they put under this category as a comment is included in this document. And they're numbered one, two, three. There's nothing, there's no particular logic to the numbering. It's just each one is a different school committee member. Number one, Superintendent Dawson works incredibly hard, is very thorough, creative, and focused. She continues to do the hard work of creating a strong vision for the district and building consensus with students at the center of her decision making. She listens and actively engages with the school and parent community. I'm impressed with her and grateful she is in Watertown. Another school committee member wrote, "The superintendent and Watertown Public Schools, like all other superintendents and school districts across the United States, have had a school year like no other for over a hundred years. However, in the face of adversity, I believe that she has most definitely risen to the challenges of pervert, preserving, preserving, safety of all and preserving and keeping the district going and has led the district to another successful conclusion, albeit that success might have been measured very differently than in the past. No one can disagree that very little has gone as planned for the last four months or that the ripples will be felt for months and years. But even so, the superintendent has been able to rally the teachers and administrators, who also had their own personal trials and concerns, and change the delivery of instruction and student's learning experiences and to guide the staff to change the delivery of services and support. Yes, most students came to the virtual classrooms with new difficulties and anxieties, but teachers and administrators figured out how to engage them and tried to keep learning on pace toward the modified goals. We certainly had some missteps, though, and I think that we proved remote learning is not ideal for most students. What I hope all parents and students appreciate is that the superintendent has always said WPS will meet students wherever they are in their learning when they return in September, whatever form that takes, and figure out how to get them back on track. Nevertheless, nevertheless, the more successful efforts during the last four months can be attributed to the solid foundation of the superintendent's leadership, the breadth and depth of her passion for the WPS core values, and her drive toward the district goals, all of which are together changing the culture of our schools in a positive way. And although we do not know what has not yet been determined or charted, our superintendent holds high standards for teaching and learning and prioritizes the safety and social emotional well-being of students and staff, which means, I believe, that she will navigate the uncertainty and lead the district to the other side successfully." Another member wrote, "This year, Dr. Dawson has been a dedicated, well-researched, measured, and responsive leader for Watertown. Her focus on education and the well-being of Watertown's children has helped move the district forward even in a time of a global pandemic. The number of impossible and difficult decisions to be made this year was incredible, and Dr. Dawson was able to lead the district to follow the best path, but not always easiest, for our students with clear communication, collaboration, confidence, and care." Another member wrote, "I have scored Dr. Dawson's overall performance as exemplary due to the extremely difficult situation she, her staff, teachers, and the students and parents who put in when we had to close abruptly. This was not an easy task and had to be figured out quickly. I have relatives with children in four other districts, and in speaking to them, I feel we here in Watertown were superior in getting a plan in place to teach the children and execute that plan. I also feel her managing this process while difficult will result in better methods as we move forward. I also feel it has been a significant stepping stone in helping her grow as our superintendent and will make for a better future for the district. Her work on getting the building projects done has also been challenging for her as there were and are a number of things that she dealt with to keep us on track while dealing with all of the other things that go on here day to day. For those reasons, I feel feel we are extremely lucky to have Dr. Dawson as our superintendent of schools." Another member wrote, "Given the current circumstances, Dr. Dawson cannot and should not be evaluated solely on her goals and success in meeting them. Rather, I believe Dr. Dawson should be evaluated for her leadership and performance during the COVID nineteen crisis. Having worked with her on the reopening task force as well as being in regular communication with her throughout this process, I believe Dr. Dawson has performed at an exemplary level this year. While we might not agree on every decision, I am beyond impressed with her diligence in leading our district through the challenges we have faced this school year and her planning for the upcoming year. Dr. Dawson has worked tirelessly, seven days a week, often extremely long hours to gather information, work with health experts and DESI leadership and her peers in other districts to consistently stay on top of and be informed about the best direction to lead Watertown through the current crisis. She communicates effectively and efficiently with the community, leading a parent to say, 'I cannot believe she got back to me on a Sunday regarding her family's survey,' and another to say, 'Dr. Dawson responds faster than any other person in WPS. I don't know how she does it.' While we still need someone effectively organizing communication, Dr. Dawson herself exceeds at her own personal level of communication and her commitment to our community during times of stress and crisis. One area of growth of communication that must be continued to improve on is with staff. There needs to be even more consideration of and inclusion of teacher voice and input. Dr. Dawson has been a tireless advocate for Watertown. From her extremely early ordering of PPE to her considering outside-the-box thinking, Dr. Dawson has performed at the highest level during a time of significant need. Her willingness to be pushed back on and asked to consider alternatives to her own methods and ideas is indicative of true leadership. Her communication and work ethic are profound and have made Watertown's work during the COVID nineteen closure unlike and far better than many other districts. While we do not always reach the same conclusion, I find it important to acknowledge the incredible leadership of Dr. Dawson during this time period. Her efforts have gone the required work, and giving her less than exemplary during this time simply feels insufficient. I and the whole of Watertown are profoundly grateful for Dr. Dawson's tireless efforts on behalf of our schools, our students, and our community as a whole." Number six, another school committee member. "This undoubtedly was a year that no one ever expected. COVID nineteen has taken our plans for the FY twenty twenty and put them on pause in many ways. Dr. Dawson's uh Dr. Dawson's were set on a path for great success while being committed to our core values here in Watertown. However, many of these goals were unable to be completed over the three months of remote learning. Reading Dr. Dawson's additional accomplishments after school closure in March, I am proud to stand beside her as a school committee member. Looking forward to more uncertainty and another challenging year for everyone associated with public schools, we need to revise the goals so fast they will work most effectively and safely for our children or so that they will work most effectively and safely for our children and families. I am more than confident that Dr. Dawson is the right leader to lead our district to continued success." And the last one, school committee member. "This has been an extraordinary year. The ratings above and my ratings above in step two are all proficient, reflecting excellent work Dr. Dawson has done over the past year. There is certainly more work to be done, as she notes in many places in her self-evaluation. But she has demonstrated a solid level of proficiency across the major responsibility areas of the superintendent. The overall rating, however, is exemplary, which acknowledges and reflects the work in the district since March thirteenth, when schools closed and the district moved to remote instruction. She provided exemplary leadership during this very difficult transition. She led the district through three phases of remote instruction that required almost constant adjustments, changing circumstances and requirements. She worked with teachers, the WEA, as well as school and district leaders to make this happen. She continued and further developed communication strategies to keep parents in the community informed, and she engaged the school committee throughout this process. In the midst of this, she continued to develop the leadership in the district with the new elementary principal, a new hire as high school headmaster, and filling in when needed to provide leadership to come to school. All of this work has put the district in a better place to face the challenges of starting a new school year still in the midst of a pandemic." That concludes the evaluation. It's a a long list, um, but um a very uh a very strong evaluation. I must say then that I think the year is. I think the years that I've been on the school committee, that's the most, one of the strongest I've seen. And I just would add that my thanks to Dr. Galson for all the work that she's done here in Watertown. I think it's reflected in this, in this document. So simply, I will say thank you, other school committee members. If they want to add a note, that would be fine. I've said a lot already. I'm not sure more can be said.
I think the comments that you spoke of tonight speaks to how we, as a school committee, feel. We're really, we don't want to expand on it, but it shows that we're appreciative of your efforts on behalf of the school children and the district of Watertown.
And I think the community as a whole echoes a lot of the sentiments that we shared. Just, I truly believe that most families, most parents, most students, most staff are really grateful right now for the leadership that Watertown has shown, and for you, Dr. Galson. So, thank you.
You can say, yes, anyone else? We've made a lot of comments. You've had to listen to all of this, so now you get to make your comment.
Certainly, I'm humbled and just very appreciative of the feedback. And, you know, I, I know, I take, I just thank you very much. But, and I always have to say, though, when I, when I hear those things that you just said about me, it's really about all of us. You know, like, for example, the moving into the kind of West, I mean, I think about the Hosmer principal, who also did, you know, similar work, but it's, what I saw there was synergy between, you know, the teachers, the staff, the administrators, the efforts, and I think we are moving very well together, which I do think, I will say, is probably, I do feel like I have good vision and that I do have a sense of purpose and a compass that I think is moving us in a direction, so. But I just want to acknowledge that I'm very flattered, but it's really the work of everybody, including the school committee. This is the best school committee that I think anybody ever could work for, and I just appreciate that.
We gotta write that down.
Well, that's how you get things done, and that's how you move along, is to have collaborative spirit. And I appreciate the comment that sometimes we don't agree, but in the end, I think we see that we're moving in a great, positive place. And there's things I can do better, and I will always be, you know, constantly striving to get better, but I appreciate that we've come this far and we're just gonna go great places moving forward. So, thank you.
No, I, I agree, and I think teamwork, and you certainly make that a point. You know, in everything that you do, there's always that element of teamwork to it. But the kind of the model that you provide and the leadership that you provide is what makes that team work together, so. Both are important. Okay. So, from that, we go to approval of minutes. So, we have four different sets of minutes to approve. July 13th, July 27th, August 6th, and August 19th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I would make a motion to approve all four sets of minutes as mentioned.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, corrections? Seeing none, roll call. Then we actually go back and vote here from positive. I'll do that. Let's finish up at the minutes.
Lilly Reed?
Yes.
Bowley?
Yes.
Puders?
Yes.
Lindsay Moska?
Yes.
John Forbes?
Yes.
David Scholes?
Yes.
And Amy Diney?
Yes.
Okay, let me back up. My apologies. We need a motion to approve the composite evaluation.
Shamu?
Second.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call?
Kendra Bowley?
Yes.
Puders?
Yes.
Lindsay Moska?
Yes.
John Forbes?
Yes.
David Scholes?
Yes.
Lilly Reed?
Yes.
Amy Diney?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Reports. So, we have two sets of draft goals here. The first will be from the superintendent, and then the second is the school committee. And we'll say at the retreat that was last week, we did have some initial discussion on both of these. So, we put them back on the agenda, just the superintendent kind of added a little bit more to hers. We revised the school committee goals. But we'll put these out there at school, start with the superintendent. She can make a few comments about it. If people have any questions, they can do that now, or suggestions, and then it'll come back on the agenda in September when we will actually vote on these. We wanted to put these out there also so the public have an opportunity to see them. So, Dr. Galson, if you want to start with yours?
Sure. Again, thank you for, at the school committee retreat, writing me with some feedback. So, I have taken the feedback that I heard, and I would just like to kind of run through, especially around Goal One, because I think that was the one that had a lot of discussion, building the bridge to return. So, with the district leadership team and the reopening task force, design, develop, and implement a plan for the successful reopening of schools for instruction in the fall of 2020. So, you know, key actions, you know, we, and I don't need to go through every single one of these, but we talked about, obviously, we formed a team, we're gonna train our staff, monitor the metrics, develop, so these are the two that I added. Just develop a consistent and concise communication plan that provides students, parents, and staff, and the greater community with the necessary information to support academic, social, and emotional learning, whichever model we're in. So, we had talked a little bit about communication and how that had dropped off, but I wanted to make sure it was in here. And then, hold student achievement and growth at the center of our effort, using available data to meet the, meet students where they're at and to move them through grade level, through grade level or course content. So, the reason I kind of framed that number five like that is we have to, you know, there isn't a lot of data available, but we have to start from the beginning and assess where our students are at and try to figure out how we're gonna meet their needs through various structures throughout the year. But making sure that we realize that we have a grade levels worth of content and coursework that we have to get through. So, how is it that we continually adjust and move forward? I thought that encapsulated that idea of achievement and communication into the goal one. And then I added Ben Charles, waiting for that. Do you want me to go into any more detail, or do you want?
No, I think that's fine.
Goal two, Watertown School, Public Schools Budget. So, I just added a few items here. Analyze the Watertown Public Schools budget expenditures to assure alignment with our mission, vision, and core values. Enhance the clarity of the structure of the budget to more readily and easily analyze expenditures. So, you know, I was kind of focused on the work that we're doing with the DMG group. It was brought up also that we're doing a lot of work in the structural building of the budget. So, I think the two of those together are gonna work quite well, so that moving forward, we're gonna have a great sense of a true analysis of our budget and making sure that we are spending appropriately, but making sure as we move forward, especially if the times get a little bit more tight economically, that we're very efficient with the funds that we have, so.
Maybe just say a word for the public in terms of the district management group?
Yep. So, you know, just like we hire consultants to evaluate our special education programs, our Yale programs, you know, constantly, we're doing a curriculum evaluation from, you know, an outside team. Every so often, it's good to have somebody come in and help you to look at your budget. So, we contracted with the district management group. They work with districts across the country, really doing a deep dive, not just about money, it's really about how you, you know, allocate your resources to meet the needs of all of your students. So, they really have an equity lens, and they're trying to make sure that we are appropriately spending so that we can get the most in terms of interventions and support for our students, not just in struggle, but just across the board, that we're meeting the students' needs across all the continuum. So, that's who we're working with, and we should be done. We have, they're gonna be doing focus groups and a deep dive into our budget, looking at all of our data, so we have to do a big data dump. And then, hopefully by February, they'll be done with the work, and we'll be able to present a plan moving forward. So, very excited about that work. Goal three is Building for the Future Elementary and High School Projects. So, this will stay here as a goal until we, you know, cross the doors of the new high school. But certainly, right now, we are shifting a lot of focus that the elementary schools are, well, the kind of, and the Hosmer are under construction, which is fabulous. Now, we just have to watch them grow, which is the best part ever. And the low will be coming right along, but really, the focus of the work, I think, is at the high school. Making sure that we are well-positioned, going to the MSBA in terms of our preferred schematic reports, and then our decisions about getting approval, and then moving forward with the preferred schematic designs, so that we are ready to present that to the MSBA and get their financial support so that we can build in to the town and move forward with that exclusion vote and begin the construction of the high school. Certainly, it's a, it's a big time right now. I'm not gonna steal any thunder, but, you know, I think if I were paying attention to the school building committee meetings right now, the great time to do that because of the deeper conversations around, you know, what we want for our students and our high school, so. That's pretty much that goal. We have a lot of MSBA work coming up. You know, the Facilities Assessment Subcommittee, we meet with a small team, we'll meet with them, and they're gonna literally go over our entire educational program, and we have to kind of justify why it is that we are promoting the program that we would like to see. So, that's a major milestone. That, and then the board meeting, in essence, to review the preferred schematic report. So, a lot of work directly with the MSBA coming up. Goal four is around equity. So, again, this is, I appreciated the comment in the evaluation that, I don't know if you ever meet a goal on equity. It is something that you are always working on and striving for. So, engaging all WPS faculty, staff, and students in embracing anti-bias and inclusive practices that promote equity and ensure all students feel valued in our Watertown Public Schools community. I'm gonna actually amend that already, but ensure all students and staff feel valued in our Watertown Public Schools community and supported in their learning. So, a big, you know, one thing that came out of the summer with the, you know, obviously, the heightened awareness of racial injustice is working on a district-wide anti-racism pledge. So, that is something that actually students have put forth, and we are working with them to try to figure out how it is that we commit, not just as the leadership team, but students and families and everyone, to live really an anti-racist way of life. So, very excited about that. We continue our work with our equity team. One thing that we are obviously committed to is recruiting and hiring staff of color. And we are looking into, actually, tomorrow's the first day we're meeting about developing an anonymous bias-based incident reporting system. We have an anti-bullying anonymous reporting system, but extending that to also include acts of anti-bias or bias, so. And then, we are going to launch on September 8th, just the beginnings of the read of How to Be an Anti-Racist by Ibram X. Kendi. So, that's one of the book studies that we're gonna engage in. And then, continuing our partnership between WPS and the Anti-Bias Coalition. We've met a couple of times this summer, and we'll continue meeting throughout the year. And then, like I said, continuing the equity leadership team. Any questions on that one? So, Goal Five, again, this has been a goal that's been around, and we continue to work on tiered systems of support. The reason I think this is even more important right now is how do we ensure tiered, meaning levels of interventions for students while we're, you know, starting our year remote, and while we're trying to, you know, reconcile the fact that we weren't physically in school for three months back in the spring? So, we really do need to work on those interventions and supports for our students. And I know there's a lot of conversation about, you know, cohorting and having those small groups even on our remote learning plan. The smaller the groups, and I know it's less time, is the more that we're gonna, I really believe that more we're gonna be able to accomplish moving forward in that remote world. So, that's just, how are we gonna take those 10 students instead of 20 and really develop personalized learning and interventions? So, very excited about that. Goal Six is, again, that district improvement, shared vision for district improvement. We are in year three or four of our district improvement strategy. So, we are, oops, I meant to have a typo, that one too. So, we will continue to look at our year three initiatives, which will drive school improvement plans. And really, we have a laser focus pretty much on four initiatives this year, which really revolve around the reopening of school when all is said and done, and how it is that we continue through the year to make sure that we have our students making very effective progress throughout. So, those are my, oh, one thing I didn't mention, the MTA partnership. So, Math Teachers Association has reached out to us and the WEA to work together to create a school quality framework that really goes well beyond MCAS in terms of how we evaluate and assess how successful we are and areas that we can improve. So, we were going to get started, but then we're finding a date to start forming the focus groups, because there are gonna be a lot of focus group work involved, so.
That's number four, under the key action.
Yes, yep.
So, I had a comment there. So, I think it's very important, because that leads into, we had the discussion about the annual report, and then, and I think this leads up to that. You put MTA rather than WEA?
It's, well, the MTA was sponsored it, so, yes, I will amend that. And not amend it, but I keep the fact that it's really an MTA partnership.
Right.
They've reached out to, I believe, six districts. So, it's almost like a pilot program, and Watertown was one of the districts that the MTA approached. But certainly, we need to add that really, when it comes down to it, it's the WEA and district, the district leadership and the team that'll be working through that with the MTA.
Right. I would also add the school committee in that one, because
Yes.
That's one of our goals. It's our second goal that kind of connects in with that. But I think that's one that we'll try to all do collectively, if you will.
Yes. I will amend it, hopefully.
Okay. Any other questions or comments that anybody wants to make on the draft goals from superintendent? To the audience, or in the committee members out there?
I see them. Shut down the tiles, so.
Okay, again, so these are drafts. We have time to look at them. Public can have an opportunity to look at it, and we'll come back to this in our September meeting for a vote. So, the other set of goals we have are the school committee goals, which we also had an initial discussion about on last week. And these are really kind of built from the goals that we had last, previous, this past year. I want to thank Kendra for kind of revising this to reflect the discussion we had. I'll just mention them very briefly and make sure we captured it, the kind of changes that we recommended, we captured that correctly. The first one is around increasing the school committee presence in each of the five school communities. And we are arguing to continue with a liaison role that we have, where each school committee member served as a liaison to one of the schools, attending the PTO and site council meetings. That was goal number one. Goal number two was to provide information about the Watertown Public Schools annually to the community. And this is, connects to the school quality frameworks that Dr. Galson was just mentioning, working with the superintendent around developing key metrics and data points. Goal number three was to highlight specific WPS programs, events, and our accomplishments for the community. And this would be to continue the update that is done after each of the school committee meetings. And then, we also had a discussion about trying to develop a stronger social media presence, kind of broadly defined, but that's listed here as well. And then, goal number four was to increase community engagement with and knowledge of the workings and accomplishments of each school community. And the key action that we recommend here is to have a school committee meeting in the, in the different schools during the school, during the academic year. And we'll see how that, depending on, you know, the Zoom and all the rest of how that's done, we'll see how that takes place. We did that this past year, and we had meetings at the Kineph and the, oh, Kineph and the Oh, and then the pandemic came. But we'll try to do that again this coming year. Gets us out into the buildings and gives more of an opportunity to connect with individual school communities. Any questions or comments? Okay, again, we'll vote on those in September. Next report, Building for the Future Elementary Schools Project. Mark, update.
I just want to say that we are preparing for pinnings and going to foundations at the kind of sometime this week, beginning next week. Right after the 1st of September, we'll be doing, maybe a little bit later than that, we'll be doing the same thing at the Hosmer, working with the project manager who's thinking way ahead, and we're already looking at topping off ceremonies for the last pieces of steel. So, these are moving along very quickly. And it's exciting to see when you go by and see what used to be there and how quickly it changes. That's my update at this point.
Okay, thank you, Mark. At the high school? Anything you want to add?
No, I think I pretty much summarized that in my goal. I must admit that I did miss that very important meeting, but that's all right. I, I think we're moving, moving right along and I, if you get a chance, I would recommend going in and looking at the presentations because you really get a sense of what the school might look like wherever it ends up being cited, but it's going to be beautiful and fantastic wherever it goes. Yes.
I, I feel like we just, we have a lot of participation in these meetings right now. This is really has basically to parents of younger students in our district is that the work that we're doing on this high school is like your children could be our first students in that school. And you know, just as a parent myself in town, I think a lot, I'd love to see more parents, you know, attending our Zoom meetings and and sharing their feedback and comments about what we're trying to do with the high school. Because I think that voice has been hard to, to come by in the meetings sometimes, but I think it's a really important voice that I'd like us to hear more. And I know everyone has been super overwhelmed in this thing with pandemic and, and planning for what is going to look like for my kid. But that project, you know, is very exciting and it's moving forward. And I think, you know, now that we're kind of getting a little more settled in what the fall could look like and hopefully we get more parents, especially of our, our younger students in town to jump in and share your feedback and, and what do you think about the project how it's moving.
Yeah. The next, sure. Can I add a couple things?
Thank you, Lindsay.
First of all, the, we are going to have another public forum at the end of September, either on September 30th or October 1st. We haven't finalized it, but I do want to also mention the fact that DeeDee touched on wherever this may end up. The school building committee at our last meeting last week asked the architect to go back and look at a, a version of the high school that we kind of dismissed early on. So I think it's important that now the committee is getting engaged and looking at the various options here and we're kind of struggling of, you know, as a committee of where we're going to end up. So I think it's important that as many people as possible pay attention to at least the forum because that is going to be another presentation of where we are. And we've now also shifted the two building committee meetings, which are the first and third Wednesdays. The first Wednesday of the month is going to be the high school and the third Wednesday of the month will be the elementary schools. So that's, I just wanted to add that.
The first will be next Wednesday, September 2nd.
Yes.
Be the high school.
I'm not sure we're going to have a lot, but we're going to have.
Any other questions or comments on the Building for the Future? We have a budget update. Heidi's there.
Yep. Yeah. Thank you. I had sent the notice, a memo, although not the financial report because we're still in the middle of doing our closing entries. And this is the final week that we'll be doing that for FY '20. And the town is also finishing theirs to do a full close of the books estimated for September 3rd. So I just highlighted some of the things that have gone on more recently. Then, you know, and as you could read, but for everybody else's sake that might be listening in, the negotiations for all four of our units within the WEA contract were settled and increases were paid. The Admin Assistance Association contract and cafeteria maintenance and custodial have yet to be negotiated, but we have encumbered the funds for next year to cover the FY '20 increases. Under the expenses is quite a bit going on. So we always have some savings from different lines throughout the year, but there, it was just a very different spring, as you know. For instance, the buses were not running and we had some savings there, but to offset that, we had significant needs for technology, PPE, software programs and all sorts of things for whether we are fully remote or in the hybrid model. And we had to really gear up quickly for that. So we typically, we do a lot of facility work or capital improvement work if we had funds at the end of the year. And although we were able to add two additional middle school bathroom renovations off of the CIP and do some painting and take advantage of the empty buildings in the spring to, to move those forward. That was a help and we did that. We ordered the additional Chromebooks to have a full one-on-one deployment for all grades K to 12 for the first time due to, to the pandemic and, and needing to make sure all of our students had devices. We purchased approximately $50,000 in PPE. And given the long lead times that have occurred with some of those, we, as you mentioned earlier in another section, we're very quick to get those orders in. Purchased UV cabinets for sanitizing, listening devices for all the classrooms to help distribute and, and make the voice clearer if the teacher, whether they're teaching online or maybe wearing a mask. So those just came in actually this week, which is very exciting. We're about to put those in all the classrooms. So those are Red Cat devices. We had a lot of cleaning and sanitizing items, both by the facilities department and other signage and, and all sorts of things that we are procuring and still procuring to protect staff and students. The classroom supplies for K through middle school are individual this year in kits so that students will not be sharing. And we also needed to replace our furniture in grades K and one with individual desks because we can't have the students sitting in groups at the tables. So those were all pretty significant and, and unanticipated, unbudgeted items that we were able to sort of comb through everything and find ways to patch together funds with the end of the year funds to be able to have all of that purchased without using our CARES funding yet, because we do need that in the coming year. So we were really looking to preserve that. It could have been used in FY '20 and/or FY '21, but we were really trying to preserve that funding for FY '21 as additional staffing and, and other needs direct, direct for the students, that's not supplies, would, would be needed. So there was a small grant available, a technology grant recently due to the technology needs driven by the COVID pandemic. We applied for that and we did receive about $33,000 or so, which was a nice add. And we were able to apply that towards our, the Chromebook order that we had in. There's also a coronavirus relief fund grant that we have to have in by the end of this week that you've probably all heard about. And, and we also had already applied for and received the ESSER grant that was put out. And those again will be used. One of them expires in December and the other one goes into next year. So we're making plans for the use of those funds. And, and again, that's for unforeseen and unbudgeted needs due to the pandemic. So that's sort of a, a high level look at what's been happening over the last few months. And like I said, we'll continue to have our closing entries over the next week or so. And then I will send out a final, you know, out of the system with the actual numbers on that. But right now we're still in flux, making the last entries. Whatever is remaining after we make those entries, we will add to the prepaid out of district tuition for next year. Just, I just wanted to mention some of the other expenses and I'm not sure, again, that people are always aware in the public, but we do make an annual payment towards the town's debt for the heating equipment that was put in a number of years ago and, and all the departments do. So we transferred this year $260,000 out of our FY '20 budget in June back to the town for the ESCO debt payments. But we also paid $536,000 and, and actually in excess of that for the Phillips building renovation out of the school budget, eliminating the need for the town to borrow the funds and incur future debt and interest. So we were very, I think, you know, very judicious as the year went on with the budget and find, continue to find ways always to strive for savings and to reinvest those both first for what the district needs for the students and for, you know, just the best that we can, we can supply our students. And then we look to offset some of the larger infrastructure needs that might have gone on the CIP and support other things. So if anybody has any questions right now, I'm happy to answer those, but I will also have the final financial report in a week or so when we finish the close.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you, Heidi, for that, that report. I took, you know, it's, it's, it's impressive that we're able to kind of handle so much, you know, everything's, new things being thrown at the, at the district in, in terms of covering costs for this and that. And, and then, you know, doing all the work here in the Phillips building at the same time. So it's pretty impressive being able to keep on top of all of that. So thank you very much for all your work that you're doing in the budget area. It's very important for the district. Lots of districts, I think, are, are looking at, you know, negative situations or deficits of one sort or another. And I think we're, we're managing our finances pretty well. Thank you.
Thank you.
We, for school committee chair, I, I will just make a, a general comment. I just want to, you know, to the educators, to the parents, to the community members, just thank them for all the input that they've been providing and the patience that they've been showing. These are certainly a challenging time and we read about what's going on in other districts and some districts are struggling, some are doing well, but I think Watertown is, we're staying ahead of the curve here a little bit and trying to move forward. It's not always easy. And, you know, decisions have to be made and everybody's going to have to kind of pitch in in one way or another to kind of make it work. But I'm pretty confident, I'm very confident that, that we'll be able to do that. So again, I thank you for the input and the, and the patience that you have. Dr. Dawson, your report.
It seems like I've said a lot tonight and a lot has been said tonight, but in, in general, what I, what struck me just hearing your appreciation of Heidi and hearing the evaluation, it's just kind of like just a statement. I, I do want to acknowledge that, you know, my, the central office team has been doing the elements work in the sense of what you've just seen encapsulated from Heidi's presentation is, is pretty remarkable. Like you said, the demands that came at us fast and furious between the budget being late and then all the buying that we had to do. But it's across the board. You know, I, I think our, our human resources director, Ken Drolazi, you know, obviously due to all, all the, the complications around COVID-19 and teachers' concerns, et cetera, has been pretty much, I think, on Zoom calls for 24/7 for the last several weeks. You know, I think Dr. Guinness were really trying to put together not only just the next 13 days, but the next 170 days when it comes to teaching and learning and, and her team as well. You know, and Kathy Demarest, I think, you know, one thing that, that our, our parents of students with disabilities, along with our 504 parents or, or, you know, and our ELS kind of fall between the two of them. But, you know, I think she's gone above and beyond in terms of holding coffees and meetings and communications and creating facts and trying to stay on top of the state's regulations because they are, it's a spider web of intricacies that, that I'm just so, I guess my point is I'm just so pleased to have such talented people, not just in those four, but the principals and the teachers. And we couldn't do what we're doing in Watertown without the fact that we've gathered such a great, strong educational community. And I'm just very appreciative, you know, all the way down. Because I don't, I don't think we could do this without our team. So very much appreciate everybody and all the work. Please remember that we have our forum. Me and I have a forum tomorrow at three. And we'll continue to have those forums every week. Once again, I'm just, just so proud and part of Watertown. There is not a better place to work. There's not a better place to be. And I'm just so pleased that we're here to help such a great community and just very thankful. So that's all I have to say this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Dawson. Next would be new business. Let me mention, we have a couple of subcommittee meetings coming up. The, both the, the policy subcommittee and the athletics subcommittee are meeting. And now it's on August 31st. Is that correct?
September 2nd. Yeah. September 2nd at 4:00 PM.
And policy first?
Yeah.
Okay. And then athletics would be at like five or something like that. It's the same group. So follow right after.
That's the plan.
I just wanted to mention one of the reasons for moving the meetings. I know that the state released its guidance around athletics. Certainly, you know, there's a lot of, it's very complex in terms of athletics. One thing, you know, we're part of the Middlesex League and this morning the Middlesex League superintendents and the athletic directors actually all met to discuss and, and think about what we might be able to offer within our league. But we are not prepared to be able to digest all of that information. And there's still more regulations and guidelines are coming our way. So that's why we have to delay a little bit to have that conversation around athletics because we're not going to be able to make a statement around what we feel is best for the entire Middlesex League until the 31st. So the second is perfect timing for that. I just wanted to let you know.
Yeah. So people are, are asking, you know, what's happening with the, the sports in the fall and, and on during the year. And so the subcommittee will have the initial conversation September 2nd about it. They'll make a recommendation to the full school committee, which will meet on the 14th, which should be in time for any kind of fall sports activities. Because no, no sports can start before the
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
No practices.
No practices. So, so if you're, those people that are, are interested and curious and wondering about the schedule, again, September 2nd for athletics. And then the policy subcommittee will look at a couple of new policies that are related to the, to the pandemic, the COVID-19 situation, along with the, the handbooks for the individual schools. And then there also will be a buildings and ground subcommittee, but we haven't scheduled that one yet.
No, I, I will find out what turnaround time the evaluation will take. I don't think it'll be very long.
Evaluation of the HVAC, et cetera.
Yeah. Which is, it'll be done on Monday, but then they'll have a turnaround recommendations. So it shouldn't be very long.
Any other new business? Community members? So the announcements, Dr. Dawson already mentioned the, the forums coming up, August 25th, tomorrow at three, September 1st at six, September 8th at 6:00 PM and the school committee, September 14th at seven. And public forum, anyone wish to speak in the final public forum? Anybody from the audience? Okay. All right. Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay. Roll call?
David Stokes?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
Nafali?
Yes.
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 Lindsay Moskowitz?
Yes.
Yes. Amy Donahue?
Yes.
All right. We're adjourned. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming.